Calling together the planning board meeting for June 6, 2023. First, I'll read the opening statement. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with the government order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law, chapter thirty eight, section twenty. Real time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting. Software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting instead of comment or question via the chair. The question answer function submitted text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpage. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. Um, quick review of the agenda, we had three amended approvals. Added to the agenda, that's forty one fifty three Arlington Street. Second one, Industrial Boulevard. And then Crescent Street parcel one forty three two sixty. We have preliminary subdivision property five forty nine Copeland Street. And thirteen fifteen Main Street teen challenge has been continued. So if you're here for that thirteen fifteen Main Street teen challenge that is being continued to the next meeting. First, we need a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion to accept main minutes.
Madam Chair, excuse me, you want to do a quick roll call vote? Who's in?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Introduction of the board, Larry Hassan.
Here.
Marty Crowell.
Yeah.
James Sweeney.
Here.
Tony Gonzalez present. Yolando might be joining late, but we're gonna, we have enough to start the meeting. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
So back to acceptance of the minutes for the prior meeting.
Yeah, motion to accept main minutes.
Second.
Okay. Roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you. Evan, you want to do the street acceptances?
Sure, we have three tonight. The first one is Lawson Terrace. It's a little dead end neighborhood off of Copeland by the country club.
Okay, so their motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes.
Madam Chair, I just want to, for the record. Remind the public that on street acceptances, these are private roads that are coming into the streets jurisdiction. The planning board makes an advisory decision. Our advisory recommendation and that the city council will have its own hearing and accept these roads. So just for the record.
Thank you, Rob.
All right, Second Street is Fields Avenue. It's a smaller road that connects Prospect to Pleasant, close to DW Field, the south side of it. And again, no issues there.
Madam Chair, one, could I say something?
Sure.
That, that road is, is very near me and I'm familiar with it. It's an terrible, 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 it's barely drivable. So I'm assuming that they want it taken over by the city to get it paved.
Eventually, yes.
Okay.
Motion to accept Fields, Fields Ave.
Second.
Right, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez is yes.
All right, and third is Ida Avenue. It's a road in a little neighborhood close by to Brockton Hospital.
Motion to accept Ida Avenue.
Second.
Roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
I'm having trouble connecting to the internet.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right. Okay, moving right along. ET Engineering up first for forty one fifty three Arlington Street.
All right, so I told them they didn't have to come here. This is really just a Scrivener's error. It's basically a typo on their plan. They wrote one number wrong. So they just have to kind of come back here. They've fixed the number. Everything is good. It doesn't really change the plan at all. It's just kind of, they have to go through the official channels. I can pull the plan up if you want to.
No.
That's really, it's correcting a typo.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may ask, what was the number for what, what number on what in?
What was the typo?
Yeah, what was the number?
Okay, it's on their zoning table. They wrote down a twelve hundred when they should have wrote down two thousand. It was for the amount of square footage per unit. The calculations were correct, they just wrote the wrong number.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Okay, so the, the applicant is not going to join us.
No.
All right, so do you need a, a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve amended approval.
Second.
All right, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, next one, Industrial Boulevard, same brief review, Evan, please.
This one, the engineer is here, I'm moving him over now.
So. But you know, you know what the little amendment is?
Yes, and he can, he can, Gene can just explain to you guys if you want a little more information.
We don't need a full review, just a brief, speak to the change, please.
It's pretty quick. Yeah, if you recall, I was in front of the board for the Industrial Boulevard extension last month. We got an approval for the project to connect the roadways. And after the meeting, the city engineer asked us to do a couple of, or a change to add an overflow for our basin, detention basin on our property to make sure it would not flow onto the road. We've added that to the plan set, so we just want that to be the official plan of record.
Thank you. Their motion.
Motion to accept amended approval on Industrial Boulevard expansion.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Last amended approval, Preston Street parcel one forty three two sixty.
This will be Scott Feria who will speak to this one, move him over.
There he is.
Who's moving Scott over?
I think we both are.
Yeah, I've done it, he hasn't accepted yet, though. He might not have expected everything else to go so fast. Let's see. But the rest of the meeting is his, so.
Here he comes. Oh, he's declined to be promoted. Scott, you need to accept it.
While we're waiting for Scott, is there some background information you might be able to share?
Evan?
Hold on, yeah, um, again, this is the same situation as the one we just heard. We approved it, this was the one with that. Well, Brockton Hospital, we just had it come through and then after the approval, it got caught up in stormwater ordinance. City engineer had them make a few changes. Oh, here he is, he's got his hand raised, so they've made it. All right, this is not Brockton Hospital, this is the personal storage unit on Crescent Street. Behind the plaza across the street from Home Depot.
Okay. Hi Scott, you're on mute. Unmute yourself and give a brief review of the change.
Thank you, Madam Chair, sorry for the delay. Scott Feria, Homegrown Engineering. For the self-storage facility on Crescent Street, as you guys were just saying. We received planning board approval for the, for the site plan. When my client went for his building permit, part of the building bit process now has the stormwater management permit. There were a couple items that the city engineer wanted us to, to address on the plans. So we had a couple of grading changes that we made to the back of the plan. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen, Madam Chair. Yeah.
Good job, bravo.
Yeah, but that's not the. It's not the right one.
Click the tab.
I'm trying.
The tab in the middle, the one you're looking for, Scott. Go back up to where you were just clicking.
Man, come over here.
Go, I'll go to the top.
Yeah, there we go, all right. There we go. Do we see that?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, all right. So we had some grading changes in the back here, Madam Chair. Just to, just to specify, I guess, that the grading is supposed to run alongside the building and eventually get out into the, into the detention basin that we designed. He just wanted some additional spark rates. We added those spark rates. There was a question as to the rim elevation down here of a catch basin. So we made those changes and that should satisfy all of his outstanding issues. So then we need you folks to basically re-approve this with these minor changes. And then he'll be able to issue a stormwater permit, which then allows my client to get a building permit.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, Madam Chair, the building doesn't move. The pond stays the same, everything sized, this is a couple of additional engineering notes on the, on the plan.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve amended approval on Crescent Street parcel one forty three dash two sixteen.
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right. Now, Scott, you're up again for preliminary subdivision five forty nine Copeland Street. Applicant Ram Durin and Surrenderin Abraham.
Yes. I have. I have. Phil Nazarella should be on.
I got him, is there anyone else with you or just the two of you?
We also have Traffic Engineer Jeff Dirk as well.
Got him.
Got him, all right.
Are you seeing the subdivision, Madam Chair?
Yes, good job.
Not without a whole lot of stress, but thanks. All right, well, I'll get, I'll just give a quick overview. I'd really like Attorney Nazarella to kind of kick it off, but I'll just give a real quick overview while, while we're waiting for Attorney Nazarella to come on board. Uh, this is a preliminary subdivision, twenty eight lots. At the White Pines Golf Course, kind of at the end of Copeland Street, just when you cross into West Bridgewater. This, the lower lot line that you're looking at is the town line between Brockton and West Bridgewater. Coming down Copeland Street, heading south onto North Elm Street towards West Bridgewater. Forking to the left onto Copeland Street brings you to the back entrance of the Kmart Plaza. So we have twenty eight residential lots proposed. All of the lots meet zoning requirements for frontage area. We have some wetlands on the property that will have to address a filing with the Conservation Commission. Will be happening at some point soon. And we have had a neighborhood meeting on this project back, you lose track, maybe nine months ago. And a, a major concern of the neighbors was the, the traffic impact in more specifically the intersection with Copeland North Elm Street. And potential problems that people exiting our subdivision would have with traffic flying up North Elm Street onto Copeland Street. And you know, it was reported that there were some accidents on Copeland Street. Mainly because of that, so that's why we had Mr. Dirks go ahead and do a traffic study. In addition to that. We came up with this subdivision layout where we have two roadways coming off of Copeland Street. The southernmost roadway is going to be an exit only, right turn only. So the traffic will only be able to exit and go down North Elm Street. Thereby eliminating the chance of being rear-ended by a speeding car heading into Brockton from West Bridgewater. So a right turn only on that lower subdivision roadway. We feel would, would satisfy any traffic concerns that either the city would have or that the neighborhood would have. I think I'm gonna stop, start blabbing from there, if I may, Madam Chair, and turn it over to Phil, just so he can hit whatever notes he has to hit. Thank you.
Right.
Council Nazarella.
Another old guy with technology issues.
He was just here.
He was, I saw him.
Well, there he is, he got promoted down. Well, while we're waiting for him to jump over. Scott, what sort of physical improvements do you plan on making at Copeland for the new road at the south intersection to, to force cars right only?
Yeah, so we'll, there, there's a couple of issues and Jeffrey Dirk could talk about it more specifically, but there's a couple of existing issues. There's a stone wall that cuts across the front of the property. And that kind of separates Copeland Street from the golf course and the golf course parking lot. We'll be eliminating that stone wall, so that will help site distance up and down Copeland Street. Exiting both of our, our roadway locations. In addition to that, the, the actual physical limitation on the exit at the southern entrance will have a, will basically have an island that will force all of the traffic to go right. Just similar like you, you know, similar to what you would have in a shopping plaza to, to force you to right. So we'll have that down in this location. And again, the, the main reason for the two locations, it's a safety issue. The, the planning board has a, a maximum dead end roadway length of, I see the five or six hundred feet. And obviously that doesn't work on a, on a thirty acre apostle of land. So in order to, to maximize the, the usability of the property, we really have to come up with two roadways. So that, that's the main reason why we have the two, as opposed to just a single road like you would see in some other subdivisions. And again, it's typically just a safety issue if there was a, an accident or a tree down in one roadway. Emergency vehicles could get in off of the second roadway and circulate through the, through the entire subdivision. So, so that's it, it's a, as I said, it's an existing golf course. There's little ups and downs to the, to the property, as you would imagine with the golf course that'll, that, that, that should lend itself to a, a pretty nice development. To keep the topography as close to what it is now. There aren't a heck of a lot of trees within the property, there's certainly trees around the perimeter that we'll be keeping in the, for the most part, the, the middle, the developable parcel portion of the land is pretty much wide open. So we'll be using the, the topography as much as we can in the roadway layout, just to minimize the cuts and fills.
Thank you. Attorney Nazarella, you may unmute your microphone and address the board. Sorry, Madam Chair, I feel like I'm stepping on your toes.
Oh, I, I can't see him anyway, so thank you.
So you there?
Is the, Scott is the traffic person you mentioned, is he, Rob, do you see him?
I am on the, I am on Madam Chair, for the record, Jeffrey Dirk with the Vanessen Associates with the transportation consultants for the project. So I, I can fill in, I think, some of what maybe Phil was gonna talk about or our attorney was gonna talk about as it relates to access and, and safety. So I think as, as Scott had presented, probably the significant change to the site plan is, it's, it's not only the restriction of that southern access to right turn only. It, the relocation of it also puts it at the position where the island that channelizes traffic between North Elm and Copeland Street, we're just about at the location where that island is. So there may be to Director May's comments, there may be some, you know, the channelization that Scott had mentioned. Adding some signs to indicate that there's no turn restrictions and then potentially, you know, maybe some extension of that island. We are cognizant, however, that the fire department needs to get, even though we have it as an egress only. The fire department needs to get in and out of that driveway to the extent that there's an emergency. But from the standpoint of our functionality as it relates to the development, that southern access is, is going to be a right turn exit only. If I could just add, Madam Chair, the project in terms of its context relative to traffic, it's gonna produce somewhere between, you know, thirty to thirty-five peak hour trips. And so as that relates to, to Copeland Street, it's not a large increase in traffic. And so our, our analysis was showing minimal impact in terms of delays or added queuing just because of that. One additional vehicle every two minutes is, is something that does not rise to a level where, from the standpoint of what we would typically experience of delays and backups at intersection. You won't see any changes as it relates to before and after the project when you get away from the property itself. Then lastly, as it relates to safety, as Scott had mentioned, this, you know, one of our critical things is looking at sight lines. As it relates to the actual speed that people are, are driving on Copeland Street. Which is not the thirty mile an hour posted speed, people are, are traveling somewhere closer to forty and, and, you know, above forty miles an hour. This change of that access to right turn only ensures that with the modifications to the wall that Scott had mentioned. We, we, it has superior sight lines as it relates to right, right turn exit only movements there. So a lot of significant benefits as it relates to these changes to the site plan. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, Madam Chair, or members of the board or Director May.
So was the traffic study already done?
It, it was, yes, it was actually done la, late last year as a part of the project.
Okay, and Rob, is another one needed or is this?
I think what, what we need from the engineer is to show those improvements that are going to be made on Copeland. How is the road going to be angled? So it becomes part of the permanent record.
Yeah, we would show that in the definitive, Madam Chair.
So the northern exit traffic can go left or right, the southern exit is forcing cars to go right.
Exactly.
It's my understanding we need to extend Copeland and North End, North Elm to facilitate this?
There, there may be a desire, Madam Chair, to, to extend the nose of that median slightly, maybe it's serrated or, or something along those lines. Cause I think the key thing is, if the fire department needs to make a left-hand turn to get in there for an emergency. We can't do anything that would impede that movement. We don't want them to make a, have to make a hairpin turn to enter. So we're sensitive to that, but there is an appropriate design to allow for the channelization. The restriction of the left turn and then still maintain fire department access if they need to come in that way.
Okay, all right, I see Attorney Nazarella with his hand up. Are you, can't hear you.
Phil, you should be unmuted and ready to speak.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Sure.
So, the in and out, so the lower right turn only, is that gonna facilitate crossing over to continue on Copeland, almost a direct shot?
It, it is not, and we do not want that to be, we don't want that to take place at that location. That's where, okay, I was suggesting that if we actually superimpose that, the channelized island on this. It just about crosses so that you won't be able to exit from here or enter. But what I was suggesting is that we may want to extend that nose a little bit more. And maybe it's serrated, just in case if a fire truck comes up Copeland and needs to get into the site, we want to make sure that they could actually do that if for some reason they had to, or same thing with them exiting. But we don't want motor vehicles to try to do that crossing maneuver.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, that's wise, I could just see the, the problems i, if it didn't do that or something to that effect, that makes sense. I got a couple of the questions if I can, Madam Chair.
Of course.
Um, just, I know we're probably not in the stage where, are we thinking our utilities are gonna be underground with this project?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any sidewalks that, we're, we're in R one B, right?
Uh, it's an R one C zone.
R one C?
Yep, and I believe your requirements, Mr. Sweeney require sidewalks on both sides of the road with thirty-four feet of pavement.
So.
Yeah, we haven't got that far yet, to be honest with you. We, I think when we get to the definitive part, we'll certainly bring that up as a, as a conversation with you folks. Feeling that thirty-four feet is just way too wide for a roadway. It's ten feet more than we need, so I, I think we'll, we'll have that discussion when we get to the definitive. But for right now, the plan that I have is showing that the, the roadway construction would meet your, your current regulations.
Okay.
Attorney Nazarella? Phil?
He had a lot of good stuff to say, too, I'll say that.
I'm sure.
Like that.
We spent hours.
He has a, a slow internet connection.
And, you know, and Madam Chair, board members, the, I mean, the, the reason for filing a preliminary is really just to kind of start the discussion with you folks. Before we spend a lot of time and money on that definitive plan. It's, you know, there's, I, I don't know that there's necessarily an action that needs to be, you know, really anything that, that, any legal issues that you would necessarily need Phil to chime in on it, so I'm not sure that his absence, although it's unfortunate and I always look forward to listening to him, I don't know that it's that necessary at this point.
Madam Chairwoman, if I could ask a couple of questions?
Yes, please.
Mr. Feria, how are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thanks. I drove over here to see this and it's a huge piece of property. I also drove and I wish I could remember the names of the, the two streets that have bought the property. But their homes down there are beautiful and they, and their property is beautiful.
Yeah, Samuel Land is above us.
Samuel Land, there you go, and there's another street also, I believe.
Yes.
And those, those properties have beautiful foliage in the back. So what kind of assurance do they, the neighbors have that, that not, all that's not gonna be taken down?
Well, that's, that's what I, I was speaking about before, the, uh,
Yep.
There, again, there aren't that many trees on the golf course, obviously, but the perimeter of the property is wooded. And that, that perimeter is gonna remain, there's, there's a zoning setback that we need for the houses, obviously.
Okay.
To be honest with you, I mean, developers, especially around the perimeter, they'd like to leave the trees so they don't have any issues with neighbors. And it costs money to take down the trees, so I, I think that natural buffer that's there, most of it is on those abutting trees. But the little bit that's on our property, we're, we're intending for that buffer to, to remain.
But most of it is on, on the neighborhood?
It's, they have a lot more vegetation than we do, certainly, yeah.
Okay, okay, that's good, that's all I want to know, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? If not, is this open to public?
It is, we're going to open this to public discussion and we'll take testimony. If anyone of our guests would like to provide testimony, please, at the bottom of your screen, if you hover your cursor down there. You'll see a raise your hand icon. If you push that, it will show that you want to speak and address the board tonight. Again, if you're on the telephone, you press star nine, that has the same function as the raise your hand. And we have a P Lynch is the first up. And I'm going to add you, you'll be accept your panelist promotion and you'll be allowed to speak.
Can we have Scott take the plan down so I can see all the attendees?
Able to un, we have P Lynch.
I unmuted. Thank you. I guess my question in looking at the plan is
Thank you. I guess my question in looking at the plan is, on the south, what would be the south exit? Why can't that just be, don't have it as an exit? Why can't it just be for fire truck access, right away for fire trucks in the event that the others? Because I still see just an issue, the way that intersection's currently configured. And the speed at which cars come up that road, I travel it every day. It's, it actually goes to, once you go past the Bridgewater line, slightly after, the speed limit goes from. The thirty up to forty-five. So even if you have a right, I mean, I understand the second exit, but why not have it? But just fire truck access or emergency, I shouldn't say just fire trucks, but emergency vehicle, have a gate across it. Don't have the residents use it, then you don't, because I think he, I I know what you're saying in terms of. Configuring the exit so that it forces a car to go right. I still think that myself, that at the speeds travel, and I don't know, I know what you're saying about taking down that wall. Better access and some line of sight coming up the road, but this car is coming the other way, too. But, and even though the cars are still going right, I just, that intersection to me, where. It splits off left if you want to stay on Copeland and right, i- is always a dicey, dicey intersection to me. That's all I had to say, but I don't know about the idea of like saying, having that. South road strictly for emergency vehicle access, whether it's fire police or, and you know, have a gate across it or something. That's all I had on that, thank you.
What what signage is there now for that inters- that split?
So the Madam Chair, the the Copeland Street. We'll call it northwest bound approach, that's under stop control. The through movement from basically Copeland heading south onto North Elm, that is, that's the primary movement. So there's that, that's a through movement under free flow control, essentially they have the right of way. The Copeland other leg has the stop control on it. If I may, Madam Chair, just to to answer the question is to, if we could make that an emergency access. To be honest, it it isn't needed by anybody in our subdivision. There's really one lot that would use that as their primary en- exit, everybody else could certainly use a northern one, as could the one that is closest to it. So everybody could exit out of the north, the north entrance exit, i- if that was desired by the board. And I I think that's probably something we can talk to Deputy Chief Williams and, you know, the other. You know, other safety personnel in Brockton, if they would prefer that, the only issue we've had in other cities and towns where we've done emergency gates. It it tends, that roadway, that section of roadway tends to to not be maintained properly. It might not be snow plowed, because now you've got a gate there so they can't plow through. So after we get a blizzard, the fire truck's got to bust through a gate, and they've got two feet of snow piled up there. So, safety wise, in the summer, it works good, they can certainly break through the gate. But I I think there's there's other issues that perhaps the the safety personnel would have, but we. If that was to, if that was the desire of the the fire department in particular, we would have no problem with making that an emergency exit only. And that would still satisfy, I believe, the planning board's requirement to have the two entrances, the two means of access, so.
Williams, do you have anything to add?
I'm not a big fan of gates, and for just what Scott said, they don't get maintained. The locks don't work when we need them, there's a lot of issues with them, so. I'm not really a big, big fan of gates, and I'd rather see it left open.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to make a comment, and here I have one coming over, I'm promoting. Jack H., who will be joining as a panelist, you can unmute yourself and address the board. If you could tell us your name, please.
Hi, my name's Jack, my name's Jack Hughes, and I live at six forty North Elm Street in West Bridgewater. And my house abuts the town line. In fact, part of my backyard is in the city of Brockton, adjacent to the golf course. See if I get the camera adjusted, but my biggest concern was about that second entrance. That would be located right adjacent to my property. Just to share some information that I'm not sure you're aware of, but part of that stone wall. That comes south enters into the city of Brockton, I mean, into this town of West Bridgewater and is in my yard. It is not all encompassed by the property owner's land. So if you're trying to improve sightlines, the part of the wall that is in my yard. Would have to be addressed to approve the sightline. The island that is in the road between Copeland Street and North Elm Street. Crosses into the town, into the city of Brockton from the town of West Bridgewater. About ninety percent of that island is in the town of West Bridgewater, and it is maintained by the town of West Bridgewater. But there is portion of that, about ten percent, that goes up into the city of Brockton. And it. If from where I think you're putting the road from the the street access. It would, in my opinion, need to be lengthened to try to keep people from turning. Right and going on Copeland Street into West Bridgewater on Copeland Street. But I wanted to thank the design team from the developer for listening to our concerns. When I approached him at the neighborhood meeting that we had probably a year ago. And and telling him to put that road there is a big problem. And I said, at a minimum, it would need to be exit only, not entrance, and I wanted to clarify, it is not an entrance. It is a one-way street, is that correct? You can only drive out that street, you can't drive in that street, it's one way, right?
Correct, right, southern one is just an exit, right turn only, no.
Right, and you can, and then they're proposing it be right turn only, which that makes good sense. And I wanted to commend them for bringing that forward, because. At that meeting we had before, they were not going to do much of anything with that entrance, except keep it as an. Open both ways and left turn, right turn, and whatever you wanted to do, and it was just going to be trouble. We have many accidents at that at intersection that I can equate to, or say.
Well, thank you for sharing that, because I like to see more of the applicants working with the community, the neighborhood, and everybody. Come into a happy medium, so thank you for sharing that.
For the Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I jumped in and started sharing my screen, but. This is the. Intersection that he's talking about. The roadway would be coming in here, and we're talking about keeping it as a right turn only. And there might be an opportunity to extend this. Yes, to keep traffic from going over this way.
And and that is part of the plan, correct?
Will be on the definitive plan if that is what you'd like. I'd like them to show that on the plan.
So should this? Should this get past it, that would be a a condition?
Certainly.
Okay, is any other folks from the community public?
If any of the attendees wish to speak, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Oops, I just realized my camera's off, sorry. If you hover, ah, Counselor Nick Castro, let me move you up to panelists. And Counselor, you should be coming over shortly. And I just heard.
My God, all the attorneys are coming on now, look out. I prefer to speak last, I prefer to speak after the neighbors speak, and there are, I believe, more on the call.
All right, if if there are more, just please, no redundant repetitive statements, comments, questions.
So again, if members of the public wish to address the board, please use the raise your hand icon. You can find that icon by hovering your cursor at the bottom of your screen, and you'll see a hand up. There it is. If anyone would like to do that, if you're on the telephone, please press star nine. And while we're waiting for people to. Possibly jump in, Attorney Nazarela seems to be live now.
Can you hear me now? Well, I'm proud of myself that I'm consistent in continuing to fail in getting through the technology, so at least consistency is, I take it as a credit. I I really don't think there's any need for me to reiterate the the wonderful outline that Scott made and Jeffrey Dirk. On the traffic in the layout and design over these thirty-eight, thirty-three acres of land. The intention is to make a well-designed layout with well-designed homes that will fit into the neighborhood, be a credit to the. City of Brockton that lacks housing, and this we find will be the most appropriate. Construction for this area and for the community, and we've done it in such a way that we relieve from any. Zoning requirements, because we meet all of the zoning restrictions and requirements according to the code. So we certainly looking forward to taking the input from the neighborhood as we did about a year ago during our first meeting. Because whatever tweaks that we think would be appropriate to make a better meta project, we're happy to entertain that.
So sorry, one question I had wrote down, is it twenty-eight or thirty-two single-family homes? Scott said twenty-eight at the beginning of his.
Twenty-eight, I said there's thirty-three acres.
On the. Report that we have, I think, Evan, it says thirty-two single-family homes, that needs to be corrected.
I will do so.
Yeah, no, that was, that was modified, when we started out, there were more homes intended. Then we modified it to twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay, I just put that on the record to correct that, thank you.
Madam Chair? Pardon me, I just wanted to say, for those who are watching, that this is a preliminary subdivision. And the applicant will have to come back to the planning board for a second hearing. We will also be taking testimony at that hearing, but what we're trying to do is get the big pieces right. So that when they come back a second time, it it's it's ready to go. And with that, I do not see anyone else with their raised, with their hand raised, so I would.
Thank you, good evening, Susan Castro, ninety Samuel Avenue, I represent Ward Four. And the Brockton City Council, and I know of at least one other neighbor who's caught in traffic, trying to get down here to participate. John Tuig, and he is a lifelong resident of. Couple of streets right off Copeland Street, and he knows this area very, very well. I'm hoping that he gets on before the end, but in any event, it is a preliminary, I understand what that means. And what I wanted to say is. In real life, this is a really difficult area in terms of traffic. Because, and there are so many accidents here, and I have all the accident reports from the police department in Brockton. I've been told by the West Bridgewater Fire Chief that he would really like to weigh in on this. If this goes to a definitive, because he feels it's a real problem, the way it's set up. The the Brockton Police Chief forwarded me all the traffic information, the accident information. There was a fatality there, I believe, within the last ten years. And the problem is that people come up the hill from Brockton, heading into West Bridgewater. And they often don't use their turn signals and and get clipped. People coming down North Elm Street are going forty miles an hour, because that's the. The max in West Bridgewater, and no one drives to conditions, they drive to the maxes. That for the mandatory speed limit in Brockton is thirty miles an hour. So they've got a head of steam coming down the hill from North Elm Street, and people get whacked. And I just don't see how that second exit is going to do anybody any good, because no one is going to pay attention to. Oh, I can only make a sharp turn onto North Elm Street, and I can't hover over and go on to Copeland Street. There's lots of reasons to go to Copeland Street and West Bridgewater, probably more than going up North Elm Street, other than the market basket. I just don't see this access as working in real life. Not only that, the access on the northerly side, it doesn't line up with the existing street on the other side of the street. Which services Skyview Drive and the over fifty-five community that's been there for about fifteen years. And it should, I think it's bad planning for it not to line up. And those are seniors that live in there by definition, and. I just, I see a lot of problems, I I see a lot of. Risk in putting these streets where they are, and I don't, I I just can't support something like this, I just can't. I'm glad the lots are the size that they are, it does avoid a lot of conflict. I'm interested to see what, when the other shoe drops, to see what they want to do in West Bridgewater. But I'm sure that will be after they get their water and sewer permit in Brockton. But but basically, this access, I think, is a recipe for disaster and for fatalities. And I'd really like to see it go back to the drawing board and redesign it. Notwithstanding Mr. Dirk, who I think a lot of comments tonight. Because I know in real life that people are going to die here, but but. And we can't err on the side of, oh, we'll make great taxes on these nice sized lots with four-bedroom colonials on them. We have to get it right the first time, and that's what I'd like to urge the planning board to do, it is within your power. Please, think about the people who already live on this street and in this neighborhood. As well as, there are so many people who fly down this street from West Bridgewater on their way to work in the morning. This is a way to get to Haywood, to Southward Street, and then ultimately onto West Chestnut, now to Route twenty-four. And a lot of people do it, there are backups on Southward Streets that sometimes go back thirteen and fifteen cars. And a lot of it is cars that pass this way. Please take this access issue seriously. Because I'll be the ones getting the call after you are all long gone off this planning board. And and it's, it's just not, I just don't see it working, I'm sorry. So those are my preliminary comments, thank you. Yeah, that that's my preliminary comments, thank you.
You mentioned only one, one house is going to use this right turn only, like, how how is that?
Could you put the diagram or the drawing back up, Scott?
I would like to try, Mr. May. Okay, does everybody see that? Okay, what what I was saying, Madam Chair, is this house right here, I believe we have it labeled lot number one. I mean, it would make sense, they're going to want to exit their garage and and come out this way. Everybody else, it's, you know, it's not a huge inconvenience for them to take a left-hand turn and use the northern entrance. So it's, it's really just that one house. That's going to be inconvenienced, I guess, there's, they still have no choice but to do it, but. E- everybody else is going to be just as easy for them to use the northern exit, it's really. I I was just trying to say, it's not like it's a fifty-fifty split with there's fifteen or twenty lots that really need to exit that exit. To get out to Copeland Street, so it's. You know, I I think that's that's the the best we can do. As far as lining up with the other entrance in, on the the Skyview development. We don't have the opportunity to line up perfectly with their intersection, because they're further up the road on Copeland Street, our property doesn't extend far enough. That perfect four-way intersection.
Could you indicate on your drawing with your cursor where that would be?
Skyview is is really just above ours, that, you know, probably is, as the council said, probably, you know, maybe by fifty feet. I I don't think it's a hundred feet, but it's just above our entrance to the north, so we don't have the opportunity to line up perfectly with them.
Lines up with the E E in street. That's how close it is.
And there is, as you, Mr. May, there is, you know, a thinking in the planning community that actually four-way intersections aren't. Aren't not really looked upon favorably, because some people just forget that there's an intersection and blow right through the stop sign, so having. So having what we call an offset intersection is actually now thought of as, as a safer traffic situation than having a perfect ninety-degree four-way stop. So there's also that to consider from a, from a traffic and a safety point of view.
But if you were trying to create a four-way intersection, you would have to acquire another piece of property.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that even an option?
I, I couldn't speak to that, Mr. May. I, I don't know anything about that property. But as I said, I think from a, from a planning point of view, I don't know that we'd want to have a four-way intersection. You know, we've got a relatively, it's thirty houses, but a twenty-eight houses, a relatively small subdivision. The Skyview development is the same thing. Some people are coming out to Copeland, some people are heading out the other way. I, I don't know that a, a four-way intersection is, is really the, the best, the best thing for this particular road.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask Scott to stop sharing his screen, and I would like to share mine one more time.
And Rob, when you have a chance, just speak to what the Bridgewater, I heard the neighbor say part of this belongs to Bridgewater. So what's, what is their role and responsibility in this?
The city line is somewhere down in here.
Right.
Actually, it's a little bit further south.
Yeah, most of that triangle is West Bridgewater.
So the gentleman who spoke earlier talked about his backyard in Brockton. There's a line that cuts through in that area. And it's hard to see on my map. So apologize for that. One of the things that we've been discussing or potentially discussing in our offices that this section of east, East Main, is that what you guys call it? I'm sorry.
North Elm.
North Elm. It's close. Is actually in Brockton. And if this were extended up a little bit further to, to channelize and make sure that, that people weren't cutting across, would it be possible to go to the Traffic Commission and have a new stop put here? And this is basically to the, to the traffic planner. Because right now you have.
Yeah, there's no reason we couldn't, yeah, Director May, there's no reason we couldn't do that. And in fact, I think to the counselor's point, I think that, you know, looking at this and that would be a way to slow the traffic down to some extent. And then working with the city to address speeds going in the other direction as well. You know, I, I think there's some opportunities to deal with both of those things. And I think to try to get to, I think, what the, you know, the primary issue was just speeding. It's volume of traffic, but it's, it's really speeding of traffic. And so some of these things, I think we could work with the city to try to control the speeds. And what you've suggested would be, you know, one of the ways to do that. Have people stop, slow down, look at what's going on before they proceed into the city.
Because you have this conflict here that is just, and I hope people can see the blue arrows.
Yes, we can.
That just, it is mishegas. It's a mess. And then with the other road over here, if, if this island were extended and there be another stop line there, it certainly would, I would think, would improve safety in this area.
And so
If, if the board.
If they work with the city, is this something that the planning board would, could put it as a condition to have this, who do they meet with next?
They would meet with the Traffic Commission.
Traffic Commission, okay.
And we have some raised hands, so I'm going to stop sharing.
Is this a comment?
Gordon, who does, is, this is Gordon's first chance to discuss. And then I'll get back to Jack H. So Gordon, you should be promoting shortly. Hang on. As a panelist. And when it pops up on your screen, Gordon, you need to accept the promotion. There we go. Declined. I'm sorry. So Gordon, I'm going to otherwise unmute your microphone now. You should be able to address the board.
Right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. My name is Gordon Gisad. I live at one. Yes. Samuel Avenue. And it seems to me that we're going to extreme lengths to accommodate one house in the new development with that exit. You know, we're talking about extending the island, putting in stop signs, right turn only, which we know they won't abide by. They'll be taking lefts and everything else. But it seems to me we're going to an awful length to satisfy a few houses in this new development, which I don't have any objection to. But why not just eliminate that exit altogether and have that one or two customers take that few hundred feet down and go up the other exit?
Well, it's also for emergency vehicles access. It's not just one house. So we, we need another egress.
So Gordon, are.
Another, one other entrance for, for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, in case the other entrance is blocked, there has to be a second way.
Our longest sub, or dead-end street or cul-de-sac can only be six hundred feet. So it's required to have another entrance for emergency vehicles.
I'm going, how many developments do we have in Brockton elsewhere with only one entrance or exit? I think plenty.
I'm not sure, but if we're trying to do things right moving forward.
Yeah, I understand that, but it seems we're going through an awful lot of effort to satisfy, well, if it's required by the city, that's one thing, but.
So besides, besides this right exit, because we've kind of beat this to, to death, is there any other concerns with this project?
Gordon?
No, I just wondering, well, when you expect to start the project? And what would be the length of time to complete it?
Rob, you want to start the process? Because they still have to come back.
Yeah, realistically, the, excuse me, the approval process, we've got to go to Conservation Commission first before we file with you folks. The conservation process is about three months. Then we need to file for technical review. That's about two months. Then we need to come before you guys. That's a couple of months. Realistically, it's, this isn't going to get approved until next winter. I would assume construction starts in April, and it's realistically probably three years. It's probably a three-year-long project. So it's probably four years from now, you would hopefully, assuming the economy is good and everybody keeps rolling, four years from now, you would be buttoning up the project. I would hope, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Any other public?
I have one more hand up from Anthony. And I'm promoting Anthony to panelist.
Mr. Valente, we've heard enough on the right turn, so please don't be redundant.
There's just one question on that. If they, if it's a right turn only, what's going to stop them from taking the right turn and going around that little island? You know, take a right turn out of the, the entrance and then take your first quick left or going around the island to go back on Copeland Street. Do you understand? You're talking about, you're talking about the island extending it out. But what's going to stop them from going around it? The backside of it. Take a right out of the parking lot and take a quick left. And that's going to cause a backup over there, too. People are cutting across the street right there. Do you, do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I do. Good question.
If you're looking to do that, you would use the, the northern end exit of our site. Instead of making radical moves and, and things like that, you would just use the, the other end, the other exit.
Yeah, but people are going to pull out, take a right only, then stop right there to take a left. And that's going to, that would be even probably worse.
But that left is one-way only. You'd be taking a left onto that, that cut-through where it's not allowed. So I, I mean, I don't know what stops anybody from going down the wrong way on a one-way road.
Could that be also worked in with the Traffic Committee for a sign, no, no left turn at that stop sign?
That section of the road is actually in West Bridgewater.
Yeah, okay. So the applicant would have.
Although it's, it's not aligned. I'm going to share my screen again. It's not aligned very well because of this coping.
It looks like it's a two-way, too.
To be making a a U-turn here.
That's a two-way, isn't it, though?
It is.
Yeah, so. It's just.
Yes, but if you notice that it's got this curvature to it.
Yeah, but still, they're going to take the right, and they're going to take that left. You know, they're going to do that. But they're going to be stopping, blocking traffic. They'll cut across the traffic.
Come up the northern end of the road, wouldn't they?
Yeah, I could just add, Madam Chair, I mean, it's not to say to the, to the commenter's point. I mean, it's not to say no one will do it. It doesn't make any sense to do it. Because it doesn't, it's, it's awkward. And if you live in the project and you want to go in that direction, you would never do that because it's an awkward maneuver, as Director May had shown. You're going to come out the main entrance and just go straight. Because that, that's the easiest move to, to make. You would not come out. And, and it's really convoluted, so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, if, if you don't want them to do what they're going to do, is you could try to make it so it can't be done.
Well, I think it'd be more headache for them if they tried that. So I, I, you know, I can never say never, but it, it would just be more headache for that driver.
I'm going to allow Jack H. to talk again. Pardon me.
So, am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, you are.
Rob May, can you put the picture up again of the drawing? There's a couple of things on there I'd like to show of the street, the graphic you had up there.
Yes, hang on just a second, please. Oops.
So the thing I wanted to show is if you zoom in on the triangle area, is there's, there's a town line marker that's there that you can see in the picture. Little bit further up, you see that white block right there that's in the, in the, in the, that, your cursor's right on it. That is the town line marker. And the town line runs diagonally, kind of the same direction as the, the black line you see in the pavement on Copeland Street. That's the town line going through there. So what I wanted to say is putting the stop sign twenty-five feet on North Elm Street where it goes into Copeland Street, stopping twenty-five feet into Brockton is not a good idea. And the reason why I say that is the sightlines. It's downhill, going from, coming north from West Bridgewater, and you wouldn't be able to see it, and it's around the curve. So I would recommend you stay with what the traffic engineer has already proposed. Adding all these other conditions on to it doesn't make any sense. And it makes it unsafe. This traffic engineer has put together a proposal that I think is the best outcome for that intersection. And, and that's what I, I would not recommend putting that stop sign there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I, I would think that the, the stop line would be farther up into Brockton in this area here. It is granted a short distance into Brockton, but it gets you a little bit farther up.
That's with the island being extended?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Right.
I'm, of course, I'm not a traffic engineer. And I would want Vanessa to look at that. As part of their definitive application.
Yes, Larry.
We've seen, you know, we're, we're beating this one. But as we just finished hearing from what Mr. Hughes had to say, if the Traffic Commission were to work on this and extend that Triangle Peninsula and put a stop sign in the Brockton area, we've seen a lot of these extra signs, or whatever you want to call them, further before the stop sign. It's, it is a stop signal coming as well to maybe eliminate what Mr. Hughes is thinking about. Because I think having a stop sign there would be kind of an important issue. Because I travel that road a lot and going left, going right, it is a little crazy over there sometimes. So just a thought.
So Rob mentioned having Vanessa look at that, look into that further. And so if this does get approved, that should be a condition. Okay, any other public comment? Or can we close that?
I have one other attendee. Oh, I'm sorry, that was Jack H. So we've already taken that.
Okay.
And I don't have anybody else with their hand raised, Madam Chair.
All right.
And again, for the record, this is a preliminary. This is not the final. And there's going to be more work done on it.
Right. And I thank the public for their input, sharing, you know, their opinion suggestions. Is there a motion?
Well, Madam Chair, we, go ahead, Larry.
Well, this one, there's been a lot of discussion on it. So I, I think one of the bigger issues is the, how we're going to determine how to approve this to move forward with a meeting with Traffic Commission and also discussion on that southern exit, whether it's going to really be an exit or for emergency purposes only, so.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be a condition that it's written into the plan to right turn, exit only, not an entrance condition to meet with the Traffic, Traffic Commission regarding the stop sign and also before that extending the triangular island as described by Mr. May.
Yes, Mr. Dirk.
Mr. Dirk.
Madam Chair, the, I'm sure the Traffic Commission might send out for a study as well. I could be mistaken, but do we want to make the island, you know, conditioned or contingent upon what the outcome from the Traffic Commission is going to be?
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Thank you. Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
We need a, a motion to approve conditioned with the Traffic Commission review. And specifically with that Road, Roadway Island extension with proper signage. I think that covers it.
A second.
Right out.
And the right out, no entrance to the third.
Right, exactly.
All right. Did I hear a second?
A second, yes.
Okay, roll call, Eric Hassan?
Yes.
James Weenie?
Yes.
Marty Crowell? Marty, you're on mute.
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for your time, folks. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. As any further business we need to discuss, Mr. May, or we get a motion to adjourn?
I think we should just remind anybody who that thirteen fifteen Main Street was continued. Anyone, in case they came late, Team Challenge was continued until next, or the next planning board meeting, which is going to be August first.
Thank you, Evan.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there anything we need to come in and sign for? Before we go?
The street acceptances.
And they'll be ready this week, next week?
I'll have Isaiah reach out to you.
Okay, all right. Let us know. Thank you.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Marty Crowell.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Good night, everyone.
Night, everyone.
See you in August.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.